Two, one. All right. Good evening and welcome everyone. I call the December 2nd, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting to order. Main purpose of tonight's meeting is to hold an additional public hearing on the Canyon Park Subarea Draft Plan, Draft Development Regulations, and Draft Planned Action Ordinance with the goal of making a recommendation for the City Council. After the commission action, the plan is scheduled to be considered by council on December 15th, with an additional public hearing there and planned adoption of the plan at that point. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Under Governor Inslee's proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings, this meeting will be held remotely. Comment will be allowed both in writing and orally. The mentioned Bothell notice, city website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. People wishing to comment were instructed to notify staff or provide written comments by 3:00 p.m. for today. A video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. Call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentations, the staff will make every effort to specify which meetings they're referencing so everyone can follow. In this meeting, the primary item is the public hearing on Canyon Park, so I'll ask everyone to hold their comments until the public hearing portion of it. Those who provided advanced notice are able to make comments under the audience comment portion of the meeting. Or during the public comment meeting. Email was encouraged as well and will get. At this point, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. And I'll just do a roll call so we can roll through it. Commissioner Olson. I see you there. Commissioner Piestrap. He's present. Mr. Chair Curd.
Present.
Present. Commissioner Fleet.
Present.
Commissioner Alderks.
Present.
And I understand that Commissioner Gustafson is attempting to enter the meeting, possibly having some technical issues, and we will recognize her hopefully shortly when she gets in. Also in attendance, we have Community Development Department Director Michael Cotterman and I saw Senior Planner David Boyd bouncing around. There he is. I'm going to park for a moment. So for commissioners. Again, this is the public hearing. I'm going to ask you to hold your questions or comments until after staff makes the presentation and after the public comment so we can have all of our discussion be decided. If you want to speak, please indicate this by holding up the yellow speaker cards in your personal screen or wave or bounce around. Occasionally, we have people who do lose video, and in that case. I'm in and we'll try to recognize you, but there is, we're managing this as best we can with the technology. And of course, please mute your microphone when you're not speaking and let's all remember to unmute it when we speak. Special challenge. So the first item on the agenda is public comment. In keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's Emergency Proclamation 20-28 regarding public gatherings and open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to staff no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all commissioners and are part of the record. Dr. Cotterman, please let us know what comments we have received.
The only comments received today, Mr. Chair, were regarding the public hearing this evening. I received no other comments for general comment or request to speak during this period.
Okay, so those who wish to speak will speak during the public hearing portion of the meeting. Thank you. So our next agenda item is the approval of the minutes. We have before us the November 18th, the minutes of the November 18th meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Commissioner Curd.
This is Carsten. I'm moved to approve the minutes from November 18th, 2020.
Thank you, Commissioner Curd. Is there a second? Commissioner Fleet.
I second that motion.
Okay, the motion has been submitted and seconded to approve the minutes of the November 18th meeting. Is there any discussion for those minutes? Seeing none, I'll ask all in favor of the minutes of November 18th, please indicate. And I see commissioners unanimously approving those minutes. So the November 18th minutes are approved as minutes. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is new business. I'll ask Director Cotterman, is there any new business before us?
I have no new business this evening, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. With that, then we get to our primary item on this agenda tonight, the Canyon Park Subarea Plan. So we will start with a staff presentation. We will then move to a public hearing where members of the public who have indicated an interest in making comments will have three minutes to do so. I'll ask commissioners to hold on questions on both the presentation and the public comments until those are both completed, and then please direct your comments to staff. We'll answer them, and if necessary, staff will ask for any supplements or information from those commenting. So with that, I do see Commissioner Gustafson attempting to get in. She may be here or she may be on her way. Let's proceed with the staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We need to, if I could pause for one moment. Commissioner Gustafson, can you hear us? And can you let us know so we can hear you? You are currently muted.
Saw her briefly and she disappeared. Still muted.
Well, we're making progress, so we will, we will proceed. So, Mr. Chair, if I could ask if you could formally open the public hearing so the presentation is part of the hearing?
Yes, so with that, I will open the public hearing on the Canyon Park Subarea Plan, Draft Plan Regulations, and Draft Planned Action Ordinance. Director Cotterman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am going to attempt to share my screen, which has not always worked for me the last couple of days. Is not what I was sharing.
Here it goes.
Oh, you're seeing it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, because it was showing me my outlook, so I was afraid I was just sharing my whole calendar or an email with you. Okay. So slideshow, everyone can see that still?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this is the public hearing this evening for the Canyon Park Subarea. Public hearing is on the subarea plan itself as well as the development regulations and the planned action ordinance. And tonight presenting, we're going to do a brief presentation as, well, a briefer presentation than we did last night for the city council for their study session. We're going to try to keep it a little more succinct this evening because this is all information that you have seen at one time through this process. There shouldn't be anything, hopefully nothing new for you this evening. But we do want to provide you with an overview of what's in the documents, the purpose of this, and also put this on the record for the public hearing itself. So as the chair said, we would ask that you please hold your questions. We're not going to pause during the presentation. So I'm going to give a little bit of background, and then Rachel Miller from Makers Architecture will talk about the subarea plan. Bob Bankford, also from Makers, will talk about the development regulations. And then Lisa Greeter from Burke Consulting will discuss the planned action ordinance, and then I'll wrap it up very briefly with some next steps. And then we will be asking the commission to take action this evening and make your recommendation to the city council on all three of these documents. So just starting out, why are we focusing on Canyon Park, the subarea, and why are we doing this update? Well, obviously, one of the most important reasons, as we've talked about, is because of the Regional Growth Center designation. This is one of three regional growth centers in Snohomish County. It's an important economic and employment area, not only for the city of Bothell, but also for Snohomish County and this part of the region. There are thousands of high-tech and biomedical jobs here, and it is a growing area. We have already exceeded the 20-year jobs target for this area in a five-year time period. So we know that growth is occurring, it will continue to. And there have been changes in the criteria for the designation of a regional growth center, and one of the things that we are trying to do to make sure that we comply with those criteria is to increase the residential mix of land use within the regional growth center part of the subarea. And I think Rachel will talk a bit later about the regional growth center. It is not the entire subarea, but it is obviously a large portion of it. There are also changes in regional transportation. We have three main highways that run along or through this area, and there are improvements planned for I-405 in terms of express toll lanes as well as Bus Rapid Transit Service and other Bus Rapid Transit Service that's already coming from the north with community transit. So that changes the makeup of the area as well, and certainly the potential for growth as we've talked about. So our challenge is really to ensure that the growth that we know we're going to experience, regardless of whether we have a plan or not, the area is going to grow. But we want to put a plan in place that will make that growth be the best possible outcome for, not only for the subarea, but also for the city and this part of the region as well. So we've already talked a little bit about the regional assets, and those are assets, but they also complicate the local transportation system and frankly, also complicate trying to create a balance between the growth that's going to occur, the land use, and the transportation system that's necessary to support that. We have talked about this before, and you'll hear it again during the presentation, but it's important to keep in mind that the growth will occur. The area is growing, it will continue to grow, which means that traffic will continue to increase and it will get worse. There are things that can be done to address some of that, but overall, there are other alternatives that we have to look at rather than just accommodating single-occupant vehicles. So this will require a commitment by the city and by the region in terms of additional planning that's needed for the area as well as funding for capital improvements and additional engagement, particularly outreach to those communities that are traditionally underrepresented in our planning processes. So we will be meeting the regional growth center criteria, and that information was in your packet previously about how we are meeting all of the criteria. Show how we can address those challenges, and one important aspect of that is the market study that was done. We have to be able to show that not only do we have a plan that meets the criteria, but there is a realistic expectation that it can be achieved. A lot of things are changing in this area. We've talked about some, the fact that the tech workers, what it takes to attract them to employers in this area. What we hear from the employers is what they need in order to attract those employees, our amenities, affordable housing, more of a mix of uses that urban environment that can provide those amenities, as well as transportation choices other than single-occupant vehicles.
I'm going to restart your computer.
Hello?
Hi, this is Sarah. I'm in, I can't log into the meeting right now, but at least I'll be here on the phone. I'll be muted.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
So Commissioner Gustafson just joined us on the phone with some technical difficulties in the video, but she is all in use of six, I believe.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rachel to give an overview of the subarea plan and the engagement that we've had with that. Rachel?
Thanks, Mike, and thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Good to see you all again. Glad to be here. And yes, we are finally wrapping up this subarea plan. So you all have been hearing about this for a long time, so I'm going to try to be brief going through this. So way back in 2018, you all were working with Bruce and covering this with stakeholders. This vision, the economic driver, multifaceted neighborhood connected to the natural environment, transportation hub, has been consistently reinforced over the last two years of work that we did following this initial vision back in 2018. Okay, next slide, please. So just a little recap of what we've done over the last two years. About 400 people responded to two different surveys, so 400 total responses, might be a few less people when we look at unique individuals. 200 community participants at four events, at least four focused meetings with specific groups that have a real interest and need to be involved in the project, the Canyon Park Business Center Owners Association and the Life Sciences Washington Groups. We've met with agencies twice in formal meetings, and then there have been many additional follow-ups and phone calls with agency staff. Hundreds of public comments that you all have seen and seen the responses to through the EIS process and the Planning Commission hearings. And we've met with you all at least 14 times, and there are probably times that Bruce was meeting with you that we weren't even here. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so during August, just a little recap, you all got a more in-depth summary way back after these happened. We had two online open houses and had a chance to talk with people in small groups, even though it was a web conference, and we had surveys during that time. So we saw a lot of support for the same kind of vision that we saw in the 2018 work. So again, the idea of mixed use around transit, more density there, that overall concept was supported. And the words that came out of community members were mini downtowns. That's what they were interested in seeing. Affordable homes, smaller block sizes, a lot of interest and investment in the pedestrian, bicycle, and transit modes, modes other than cars, improved connections to transit, amenities and services in the business park area and for residents living nearby, density near transit, and interest in a park and ride south of I-405. There were some questions, I won't go over that right now, but just clarifying and informational conversations were happening in those small groups. Next slide. So the online survey had about 64 respondents, and what was really interesting to see was that all of the recommendations, it went through the major proposals in the subarea plan, and all of them were supported, most of them really strongly supported. So it was something like 75 to 90% of people on the major proposals were in the agree or strongly agree categories. The strongest support was for creating places enjoyable for people, so there were a number of proposals under that category, and people really liked all of those. But what really stood out was beautiful streets and paths, so tree-lined, easy, comfortable, convenient ways to walk and bike and roll around the new neighborhoods. There were diverging views on a couple of topics, and the biggest one was reducing parking requirements. There were concerns about that, wanting to make sure that the transit options were strong enough to make that viable, and then also what impact that might have on street parking. Next slide, please. So going back through the overall concept, again, there are three nodes, and the idea behind these nodes is that they really leverage the regional investment in the Swift Greenline and the I-405 stride Bus Rapid Transit, so really great regional, fast, efficient transit running pretty frequently. So the idea is that more people could be able to live or work or play or gather or meet up here and make use of the great jobs in the neighborhood as well as this access to the region. So the three nodes are the 17th node, and so connecting from that transit station, it's going to be on I-405 in the center and a flyover stop, so getting from there into the node and then through up 17th and then eastward on a new through-block connection over the North Creek and into the business park. So that'll be a major connection in. And then on the south side is the Canyon Park Place node. There's a shopping center there now, a hotel, and the idea here is that with redevelopment, similarly, it could be a really great place to gather and play and live and work, except right by I-405 where there'll be an air quality buffer so that nobody will be impacted by air pollution or noise. And then up north, Thrasher's Corner, the third node, would be allowed to evolve more over time, and that's in recognition that there are a lot of cultural anchors already in that area, and it gives the city a little bit of time to get some anti-displacement strategies and work in place. So the effort isn't there right away, a slower evolution there. But again, over time, a mixed-use environment, making use of regional transit. So there are some other ideas on here. In the purple employment zones, the residential use has been removed to make that more consistent with the CCNRs that were already in place and to protect the area from residential development that we had been seeing displace the opportunity for commercial uses there. Okay, next slide, please. Actually, while I'm on that, one point is the Regional Growth Center, you may remember, has shrunk over time with each iteration and alternative that we developed. It's shrunk over time to be able to meet that Regional Growth Center criteria, to meet that 45 activity units or people per acre. And I'll just mention that even over the last couple of weeks, we removed a tiny sliver that really only helps the outcomes of the plan. Okay, next slide. So those yellow lines that you saw on the last slide are these neighborhood center streets that are really meant to be the connections that people were talking about and supporting in the survey and online open houses. So mixed-use neighborhood centers, these are the centers of those. These are where you'll see people gathering or using whatever commercial uses come in on those ground floors. The emphasis here is on flexibility and the ability to have any kind of business come in and make it easy for them to come in so that it's making that space as affordable as possible for startups, entrepreneurs, condoized spaces, coworking, those kinds of things that are not necessarily retail or traditional Main Street uses. So, yeah, thank you. Next slide. The, this is another image showing those kinds of uses, again, really flexible uses and meant to be artisan, light industrial is allowed on these streets, and the outdoor life is an important thing here. Next slide, please. The station connection is another important aspect to making all of this come together and gel. Without these connections to the station, it'll be a real miss and might feel like everything is just really disconnected. So for people to feel comfortable and safe, as much activity and really good urban design on those pathways up to the station is pretty critical. Okay, next slide, please. With redevelopment, and Bob will talk a little bit more about this, open space will be required, and there are a number, there are three locations where significant gathering spaces are requested, and then with, and private spaces can come in with redevelopment as well, many of them publicly accessible. Okay, next slide, please. On the transportation front, there were no easy solutions. You might remember the rounds and rounds of analysis and options and alternatives that we threw at this thing and plugged things in and took them out and tried different projects, and this is the best fitting of all the puzzle pieces that matches the land use and the transportation and makes the whole thing work. So the things that are really stressed in the transportation approach are the pedestrian and bicycle connections, and so what you see on this map is the connections that get people from transit to at least the North Creek Trail and the major uses, the major nodes. As I mentioned, there were no easy solutions, and so the major roadway improvements that we identified as many as we could do to increase capacity on roadways and intersections, and then there are three street extensions that are pretty major projects. So 20th Ave, yes, where Mike is pointing out, the red star up there, and then to 14th Street Southeast connecting from Bothell Everett Highway to 9th, and then to 19th, which would be something related more to private redevelopment. So the idea there was that we cannot build our way out of congestion, but there were at least a few projects that were reasonable that could help. And then prioritizing transit, and I'll talk more about that later, as well as transportation demand management. Talk more about that in a bit. On transportation demand management, the first step is to secure ongoing funding, and then after that, facilitating partnerships and short trips or last-mile trips from the station into especially the business park, so connecting commuters and also useful for people living in the area. So some of the things you see on the right are some of the strategies there, but this is really about facilitating partnerships. We did see that when we met with Life Sciences Washington, they were interested in a circulator shuttle, so those kinds of things may have some traction. Facilitating shared parking, again, working with the businesses in the area, requiring scooter or bicycle device parking, this actually already happens citywide with developments of a certain size, and monitoring the mode share over time, and so making sure that that shift from a single occupancy vehicle or just regular old car travel is moving more towards carpools and transit and these other forms of moving around. Next slide, please. Just a reminder, I was mentioning that this is the set of transportation improvements combined with where the density was allocated and the mix of uses that this alternative came up with. This was the best solution and got us to Level of Service E on all three corridors. Just a reminder, the Bothell Everett Highway corridor is long, it's all the way from SR-522 to SR-524, although the intersections here are some of the most challenging along the corridor. So even if we do nothing, the LOS, it's, well, traffic congestion slows down even in the no-action alternative, and it actually gets to LOS F on SR-524 and Bothell Everett Highway. With this set of transportation improvements, it does come, it would be at LOS E on those. So again, what changed between the no-action alternative and the 2043 preferred alternative was the transportation demand management strategies. So that is a big shift from people moving in cars and starting to use more transit and walking, biking, rolling, et cetera, and then the additional projects beyond what was in the comprehensive plan already. Okay, next slide, please. So prioritizing transit is something we've heard clearly from you all throughout the project, and the way the plan addresses this now is to complete the Bothell Everett Highway widening, which is a comp plan project that was already on the books, and as possible, include transit signal priority. And then, from you all, there's been a lot of support to really look at this regionally and see what can be done along the full length of the SR-524 corridor, work with regional partners, and then when they're ready to make the shift, go ahead and convert those exterior lanes into the business access and transit lanes, which means that they would have transit, buses would be allowed in those exterior lanes, and then any cars that need to make right turns to access the streets around there. So when the region's ready for it and when it's feasible, then go for it. And then coordinate, continue coordinating with community transit on the local options internal to the business park and internal to the subarea. So because of that 20th Ave extension behind Fred Meyer, there are some options for buses to do different things than they do today. Okay, next, next slide, please. That's it for me. So Bob will be up next, talking about development regulations.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners and member of the public. I had to unmeet myself. So the regulations, the draft that we put together is going to completely replace Chapter 1248, which is the existing regulations for Canyon Park, and we put it together to simply implement the subarea plan, goals and policies, while also trying to integrate in the context of the Title 12 and also building on some of the good elements and structure of your downtown code. So because there's a lot of stuff in here in this chapter, we've split it up into these six articles, and that's somewhat similar to downtown, a little different, but so it's got purpose applicability, it's got, the second article is on zoning that deals with permitted uses, and then C-dimensional standards, and then we get into street design, circulation, and off-street parking requirements. And then the last three articles are the design regulations, including block frontages, site planning, and building design. Next slide. So there's a new set of zones that will cover the Regional Growth Center, and these are the colored ones on your map here, the non-gray areas, and that's what the regulations in 1248 will apply to. The areas that are in gray are outside of the RGC and those will simply remain in their current zones. Like you see R ninety-six hundred there, it will just follow the R ninety-six hundred regulations in Title twelve, for instance, and the same with all the other zones in the gray areas. Next slide. So like downtown, we took a form-based approach with the regulations here. The focus on streets and connectivity, a lot of what Rachel just talked about, streetscape design, mostly the sidewalk with pining strips and, and those details above the curb. And in block frontages, which I'll get into shortly here. Next slide. So the block frontage regulations deal with the location and orientation of the buildings, the design of facades, if, also the location of parking, surface or structured, and also identifying those areas where flexibility is warranted along, along those frontages. And so some of the, the primary designated streets or block, block fronts are like this storefronts. Basically, the areas where ground floor commercial is required and to be at a storefront design right up against a sidewalk as the graphic and photo show here. And go to the next slide. So the map there, the key thing here is there's only two areas highlighted with the circles there where ground floor commercial and these, this storefront primary block frontages would be required then. And as Rachel had mentioned, the desire is to create flexible ground floor areas, particularly in the core of the business park area. So these are pretty much where the existing shopping centers are. And so as those areas evolve, then they would have to, if they're reconfigured or rebuilt, they would be reconfigured to have that sort of Main Street concept on the, those particular routes there. And then you'll see the, on the right, there's just a screenshot of some of the typical standards dealing with transparency, weather protection, minimum ground floor height, entries and all those details. And the next two slides get into the secondary, which is more prominent in the area. Those are areas where you can either do a storefront if, if you choose, or you can have a landscape setback. And of course, you can do office or you can do residential, or you could do storefronts. So there's a choice, but it's going to be pedestrian oriented. So generally, the parking is, is very limited, surface or structured along the street. Go to the next slide. So the, you'll see there in the pink on the map shows where those block frontages are, where you meet those requirements. And to the right is a screenshot that includes a summary vision. And then the, the regulations, it just shows the beginning of the chart, but it gets into the ground level, building location, transparency and all those requirements there. And, and there's also some what we call departure opportunities where there's a little bit of a avenue for flexibility there. And we described what the specific departure criteria is to make it very clear. Next slide. So for circulation and blocks, a really big emphasis was breaking up these superblocks as if and when the, particularly the business park or even the shopping center areas redevelop at these more urban densities that the zoning allows for. And so you'll see these, Michael's got the cursor showing the dashed dotted gray lines. And those are the areas where the team carefully picked the locations of those at strategic intervals that are generally consistent with this level of urban development. They would occur every a few hundred feet. And there's flexibility as to how those could be designed. They could be like a utilitarian alley. They could be like the, where it says forty-foot combined easement, which we're calling a woo-nurf, where it's a shared lane, where you need some vehicle access, but it's going to be pedestrian oriented as well with some landscape bearing off the side. Or it could be simply a pedestrian path, doesn't even have to have vehicle access, like the thirty-foot combined easement graphic on the left. Or there's three tiny images there that show kind of the European style urban passage. And so there's, it could be those designs. And then there's, there's also block frontages. So when you choose to do one of those designs, there are standards for how the development forms around those. So you keep a good context. Next slide. And for those areas on the map that don't show through block connections, and if they are redeveloped, then you refer to this maximum block size standard. And for the mixed-use zones, it would be eighteen hundred feet. And again, it doesn't have to be a public street that would bound these blocks. It could be one of these, one of those through-block connections designs that I mentioned on the last slide. Next slide. So there's a whole host of site planning standards in there, but I'll zoom in on just the open space part, since that's such a critical element of, of the code. And so multifamily and commercial have somewhat slightly different standards. The multifamily, what we came up with is, is a minimum usable onsite open space standard of twenty percent of the floor area of the development. And for non-residential, it would be the equivalent of eight percent of the floor area. And I will mention that we had a, had a discussion with the staff here. And David Boyd pointed out that, that in downtown, you're looking at, rather than using gross floor area, which we mentioned here, that looking at net floor area. So we, I was advised that we probably should go with some consistent terminology and standards there. So I think that's the, the direction I received. And I don't know if, if Dave or Michael, you want to chime in on that or what I've said here is good enough and we can move forward. And then for the, for the actual standards for that amount, you look at the chart below, which says at least fifty percent of that minimum usable outdoor space must be publicly accessible. And then there's design standards for that in the cross-reference BMC there. And then up to forty percent can be what's called common outdoor space. And that's kind of like the image in the lower right, where it might be above a parking garage and just the residents of an apartment complex access it. So it's common to those apartment dwellers, but may not necessarily be publicly, publicly accessible. And then balconies can accommodate up to twenty percent of that minimum total to help encourage that, but not making sure that, that more is public or common. And then there's a whole host of building design standards that get into massing and articulation, details, materials and blank wall treatments. Here are some screenshots of those. Take a lot of the toolbox approach where we have a standard and then say, here's a number of ways you can meet that. A lot of photo examples that show acceptable ways and a variety of acceptable ways to meet it. And sometimes showing what's unacceptable, which can be just as important. Next slide shows examples of the building details toolbox, where in this case, what we say, do at least one window or entry treatment detail. And here's, here's four examples and here's some photo examples. And then a lot of times we say other, other that meets the purpose of the regulations. And then on the right side, you see an example of the material standards for some of the commonly used materials like concrete block, EPIS metal siding and like hardy panel. We have special standards like this that, that describe the way, conditions for their use and show good, mostly good photo examples on how to meet the purpose of the regulations. Next slide. We ran into this last night where they kept buzzing quickly through the slides here. We'll see if we can get it to, here we go, usable floor area. So we, earlier on, we, we use some density counts to count the maximum, but we've gone away from that to simplify things using floor area ratio. So here you'll see the minimum, but you'll also see the, see the base maximum. And you can exceed those base maximums through bonus, bonus provisions. And then the other thing that I'll mention here is at the last meeting, we had gone through a discussion where you look at the maximum base FAR. You'll see in the ORM and the residential mixed-use M zones that there's a one point seven five max. And we had debated about changing that to two point oh based on our analysis of, of some of the developments on some of the sites or perspective developments. And looked at, looked at the models and, and also we were thinking about how, how easy or challenging it is to get to those levels based on requiring some of the mid-block, the through-block connections and everything. And what we came up with is I think that suggesting perhaps to change, bump up the one point seven five to two point oh in those medium zones. So that was something that we were discussing and wanted to point out. Next slide. And of course, affordable housing, there'll be mandatory affordable housing, as we've discussed several times in the last few meetings, in all of the mixed-use zones. And that commercial linkage will be included, but we're still working on a specific fee. Next slide. And the other couple of things here, removing, we'd be removing the motor vehicle sales overlay in the tire area as something that's just not consistent with the new direction of the sub area plan. And again, that the RAC is replaced by the multiple zones in the Regional Growth Center to preserve the employment areas. And the RAC is retained in other parts of the city and in the sub area outside of the RGC. And, and also vesting runway for qualifying projects through nine thirty twenty twenty-one that I believe we've talked about a couple of times and Michael's expanded upon. And I think that's the last slide here for the regulations. Yes. I think Lisa's going to chime in.
Yep. Thank you. So this slide is just illustrating the process to develop the Planned Action Ordinance, which is the third of the three components talked about this evening. The idea is to recognize the upfront environmental review and to recognize if development fits that, fits within the environmental review. It allows less paperwork later. And it's a process the city's familiar with through the downtown planned action. For the next slide. So the, the ordinance identifies where the planned action applies. We're suggesting the whole sub area. Most of the growth is in the Regional Growth Center boundaries, but there is other growth that was studied cumulatively as part of this process. And the land uses allowed would be those that Bob and Rachel described that are consistent with the sub area plan vision, does include some supporting public services. The ordinance does establish the dwellings and jobs associated with the preferred alternative as sort of a bank of growth that's covered by the environmental review. Similarly, there's a bank of traffic trips. And the developments in the planned action area would need to follow the city's concurrency process and implement mitigation. There's review criteria in the proposed ordinance and there's also a periodic monitoring process. The contents of the mitigation measures that are attached to the ordinance come from the EIS. And the applicants for planned action would go through that checklist that relates to that EIS. And the mitigation measures are drawn and cover all the topics that you see there at the bottom of the slide from the natural and built environment. I'll highlight just a few of the mitigation measures. The full list is in the ordinance for transportation. There's reference to completing the frontage improvements that are identified in the sub area plan and regulations. There's recognition that the city can condition development to address inadequate road conditions on private roads. And there are requirements to pay the traffic impact fees. And if some of the private roads become public, they would be part of that, that impact fee. And there's also a reference to transportation demand management and the city's desire to implement a TDM program and the ability to condition projects consistent with that program. The table at the right just shows some examples of what TDM measures could look like. There is also a requirement for a right-sized parking analysis to make sure there's enough, but not too much as part of that TDM approach. And then the ordinance does also allow for a collection of fee and lieu in case the city wants to make the improvements collectively, comprehensively on a segment. There's also the opportunity for a developer to put some improvements in place that benefit and not only their property, but others and then recover the cost. Other example mitigation measures in the planned action that are based on the EIS are to have planned actions implement and retrofit systems to detain and/or treat runoff before it's released either into creeks or the stormwater system. And the city has indicated a need to apply more stringent requires than the standard of the manual and put in place higher flow control and water quality to lessen impacts downstream. And also if, if development's occurring within an area that is served by the private regional stormwater facility, they can choose to either make improvements on their property to manage stormwater or address those, improve the regional stormwater facility. So I think, there we go. Back to Mike.
Okay, thank you, Lisa and Bob and Rachel. So as far as next steps this evening, obviously, we have the public hearing at the Planning Commission and we are seeking a recommendation from the commission, including those additional changes that Bob noted in his presentation. And then this is scheduled for public hearing at the City Council on December fifteenth. With action that evening is anticipated as well on adoption. So the action for the commission tonight, after the public hearing, if you so choose, is to recommend these three documents, the draft sub area plan, the draft development regulations as amended, and the draft planned action ordinance to the City Council for their adoption. And we can talk about that when we get to that point in the process. This, as, as was mentioned earlier, this has been a lengthy process developing these documents, the, the plan and the regulations in particular, and all of the environmental review that went on. This is not, the plan is not a prediction of what the future is going to be or even, you know, a guarantee that it will turn out that way. But it is that path forward that results in the better outcomes that we talked about. We would put an effective date of January first to give us time to make sure we're producing all the final documents for this, as well as educating the staff and any applicants that might be coming in about what is changing. Implementation is really the next major step in this process. Once it's all adopted, there will be some items showing up on the docket that are deferred tasks that we've talked about with the Planning Commission. And for various reasons, we're not including them at this time in the recommendations, including the transfer of development rights. That was something that will come along as part of the sound transit development. The commercial linkage that we've discussed for affordable housing. We have a mechanism in there to do that. We just haven't figured out yet what the appropriate fee for that needs to be. So we will be able to collect that in the future. Once we determine what the fee is, it'll already be in place. And then the bonus incentive system that we've talked about with the commission, and we have some recommendations, some guidance from the commission on what that would, would be. And we're just trying to, again, come up with the right formula to determine what is worth a point two-five FAR increase, for example, what it would take for that. There will certainly be a lot of capital investments that will be necessary. Some funded locally and others from regional funding, particularly on the transportation side. And then certainly ongoing coordination with applicants as they come in. Anytime we adopt a new code or a new procedure, there's time involved in, in. there's time involved in getting all the staff up to speed, but even more so making sure that the applicants, as they come in with their proposals, are aware of those changes and that we work with them to make those happen. And certainly ongoing communications and coordination as well with the Canyon Park Business Center Owners Association regarding some of the concerns that they've raised. We've addressed some of those and resolved some of those. There's some others that we're continuing to talk to them about that we'll work through as we get the practical application of this going. And then the whole discussion about private streets will continue as well. So with that, we are concluding our staff presentation. And we will go to public comment. And first person to testify--
Director Cotterman, proceed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. First speaker this evening is Karen Martin with the Canyon Park Business Center Owners Association. Karen, can you unmute? Karen, can you hear me? It's Karen Martinez. I'm sorry, I said the wrong name.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Karen, can you--
Okay.
Yes. So you have, you have three minutes, Karen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Karen Martinez, and I am the president of the Canyon Park Business Center Owners Association. The Canyon Park Business Center makes up more than 65% of the area within the designated Canyon Park Regional Growth Center. The association represents all of the property owners within the park. As you know, the owners in the park are very concerned about how this plan will affect them and their tenants. Our main concern is increased traffic congestion due to the subarea plan update without sufficient mitigation. Currently, it can take more than a half an hour during the evening commute just to get out of the park due to congestion. We acknowledge the plan's focus on improving transit, but even your own transportation demand goals estimate that 78% of people traveling to the subarea will use single occupancy vehicles. We are worried they will be sitting in an even more gridlocked area. We acknowledge that city staff have responded to some of our concerns, and several important changes have been made to the development standards. We appreciate those efforts. But this plan is incomplete and not ready to be advanced to the city council. The final EIS has not been issued. Critical additional development regulations remain to be drafted, such as the affordable housing fee and the plan for proposed transportation improvement. Some of the documents have not been made available for public review and comment, like the cost estimate for the transportation improvement. We request that the commission delay advancing the plan to the city council and direct staff to continue to work with us on our concerns. Recognizing that this isn't likely at a minimum, we request that the commission make two revisions before advancing the plan to the city council. I will now turn to Ray Laugh to describe our requested revisions. But before I do so, I would like to thank the members of the planning commission for your time this evening and for your efforts related to the subarea plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Cotterman, who is up next? Dr. Cotterman, are you there?
Yes, I forgot to unmute, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. So it looks like Ray has, is unmuted. Ray, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Your three minutes starts now.
Great, thank you, and good evening, commissioners. I am Ray Leau of Van Ness Feldman, one of the attorneys for the Owners Association, as Karen mentioned. As I know you all are aware, the Owners Association has been very engaged throughout this entire planning process. And as you heard from Ms. Martinez, we're not thrilled with where the city has landed at this point in time. But we are very appreciative of both the commissioners and staff's attention to our concerns. And we do want to acknowledge that the proposed development regulations before you this evening have been responsive to some of our requests. What I'm here this evening to really emphasize are two remaining important changes to the development regulations that we are asking the commission to incorporate into the version that you take action on. So number one, we are requesting a provision that would authorize deferral of certain development standards. And what I'm speaking to here are really some of the area-wide or system-wide improvements, such as the through-block connections and trails, that really rely on the redevelopment of an entire block, not just one property at a time, in order to be functional. So our concern here is that the current development regulations, as written, don't anticipate what happens when only one property in the park redevelops. And you've got a through-block connection or a trail that functionally goes nowhere. It's incomplete because the rest of the surrounding area hasn't quite gotten ready to redevelop. So this, we're concerned this is going to end up in some pathways and to dead ends and roadways that require consuming turnaround. We're also concerned that developers don't always redevelop at the same time. You're going to end up with different forms that each side chooses, and that could become a bit of a mess. I think we've all seen some of the residential neighborhoods built with partial sidewalks that go to nowhere. That's really not what we want to see in the park. So to avoid this mismatch of redevelopment that we're a little concerned about, we're requesting that the regulations allow developers to just defer constructing its portions of through-block connections and trail improvements in where it's really a system-wide improvement that's really going on until such time as the adjoining properties also develop. So the commitment is still there to do the work. It's just provisions that would allow for that to occur in a, in a more logical point of time. And this is a strategy that has been employed successfully by other jurisdictions. The second provision we're asking for is a modification to section 112.48.030 of the proposed regulations, that's the departure section. And specifically, it concerns the, some of the conflicts that often occur between the CCNRs for the Owners Association, as well as some of the provisions proposed in these development regulations. We believe staff has acknowledged this in their responses, that where there is a conflict between the CCNRs, those CCNRs will control based on property, property rights. However, we requested that staff memorialize that in the regulations, that that request was rejected. What we're coming back to the commission to this evening is effectively with a bit more of a compromise that says at least through the departure process, if you can memorialize that as an option for developers, we think that that would be a more predictable manner for developers. I think my time--
Okay, thank you, you're at three minutes. So could you wrap, please?
I am wrapping up. I saw, I saw the three-minute sign. So thank, I just, these are our last opportunity to say remarks to the planning commission. And I just want to end by saying we really appreciate your time and your efforts related to the subarea planning process. Thank you.
And I want to thank you for your participation and let you know that we worked forwarded a exhibit from Van Ness Feldman, which did have your two requested emissions. Dr. Cotterman, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next, we have Travis Lynn with Geno Therapeutics. Travis, it looks like you're unmuted. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Your three minutes starts now.
Very good. Good evening, everybody. My name is Travis Lynn, and I'm the capital projects manager at Geno Therapeutics at 1522, 217.
Travis, we just lost you.
They just told me I was muted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. I'll, I'll restart. Go ahead, start over.
Okay, very good. All right, good evening, everybody. My name is Travis Lynn. I'm the capital projects manager at Geno Therapeutics at 1522, 217, place southeast here in Bothell. I've commented previously about our plans to expand our campus in Bothell to help recruit and retain talented employees to work here with us in the city. Geno's excited to grow in Bothell, and I'm here tonight to first thank the planning commission for your consideration of the language we shared, which provides a runway for projects significantly underway in the design effort to fall under the current land use code. We've appreciated the city's thoughtful consideration of our proposal, and that the commission has supported including it in the final draft. Having the assurance that our substantial investments in research, capital allocation, and design efforts will not go to waste due to a need to redesign to meet the new codes and deliver the new part of our campus quicker. As noted in our correspondence with the planning commission, the careful structuring of the provisions will help our fellow Bothell businesses proceed with their plans without substantial impacts, while allowing City of Bothell to have the protections from having too many projects be exempted from the new code to be effective. We're excited about our continued and growing presence in the City of Bothell and strongly encourage the city council to include our suggested language into the final version of the code. And with that, I thank you for your time and your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Those are all of the speakers I had signed up, Mr. Chair. And I'm only seeing one, I believe. Commissioner Gustafson, are you still on the phone as well?
Yes, I am, thanks.
Okay, that's, that's, that's you then. I won't, I won't mute you. And those are the, the only other speakers that I had then, Mr. Chair. And you noted one letter. I should also note that we have received a few letters over the course of the last week or so as up into and including a little bit after 5:00 today. Those have all been forwarded to the commission, and they are getting posted to the website. And they will be part of the record for the public hearing for the city council as well. So right now, those go through exhibit number 33. That was the last one that I sent you after 5:00 today. Just so you know, those, that you should have all of those. And if you don't, as I said, they are available on the project website as well. Or will be tomorrow at the latest. Some came in a little bit late today to get posted. So with that, Mr. Chair, I think we can move on to, if the commission has any questions. We have the consultant team here, Rachel and Bob and Lisa, as well as Steve Morikawa from Public Works and David Boyd from Community Development.
Okay, so I see Commissioner Vleet raising his hand. Please proceed with your question.
Thank you, Chair Karen. Dave Vleet here, Commissioner Vleet. I guess maybe it's a question for one of our consulting staff or even our, our Bothell city staff. With regards to that question, the two, I guess, revisions that were being asked for by the Canyon Park Business Center Association, especially with regards to the through, I hadn't thought about that, the through-block connections and kind of these roads or roads to nowhere. Are they, there may be eventual roads that continue through. And if they can kind of help us out thinking through that potential asked by the Business Center Association. And do you, do you see that as being an issue or not?
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to start out answering that. And then if Steve or someone else wants to jump in. This is something that we've had with representatives of the Business Park Owners Association. And a deferral is something that we're going to look at more closely. I don't think it needs to be in the regulations at this time because there's a lot more that we really have to analyze before we can say that this is the way to go. I think it has some potential. There are going to be some issues with, as, as Ray mentioned, and this is a situation we have now in the city, where we have frontage improvements that are done by developments, and they are required to build a sidewalk and curb and gutter. And that may be the only part of the block where that exists. But in the future, as other properties develop, then that will happen as well. So we get these incrementally. And that's, that's quite common, actually, in most jurisdictions in how that is accomplished. That's not to say that a deferral may, could be appropriate in some circumstances, and we'd certainly want to look at that a little more closely. So we wouldn't recommend that we include any language this evening, but we will be continuing to, to explore that possibility.
Thank you, Michael.
Commissioner Aldrich.
Jenny Aldrich here, thank you, Chair. I think of this sort of like when you need to replace the fence in your backyard and you have to kind of work with your neighbors to figure it out. That it seems like there could be situations where it might be appropriate that a developer who is in the process of developing works with the neighboring companies to complete a project. If I'm understanding, like, and well, is that the case that, that could come up? Is, and is that sort of what is being requested here? That there might be situations where, where companies are working together to fulfill the development requirements?
That is one possibility that, you know, we might see if it would make sense if they wanted to work with the adjoining property, if it were possible to continue a through-block connection, for example, on a property that wasn't redeveloping at that time. What we would look at from a staff standpoint is what's being proposed as part of the through-block connection? Is it pedestrian-only? Is it vehicular? What makes the most sense? As Bob talked about in his presentation, there's a lot of flexibility built into how those would be implemented. So it may not be exactly on the site where it's shown on the map. And it may be that we say, you know, provide this much of the through-block connection to provide vehicular access to the property, understanding that in the future, it could be continued. And we'd want to make sure that whatever, where it was located on the property, it wouldn't be precluded from being continued in the future. So it's not an ideal situation, but it is something that we've done in other, in other developments as well. You know, they may have access to a road, and it's a, maybe it's a half-street improvement until the rest of that property redevelops, for example. And then there may be situations where a deferral would be appropriate and other situations where it would be better to have even a partial through-block connection or some other piece of those networks put in place. And again, that's why we want to take a closer look at this for purposes of, before we put something in the code, to make sure we have some idea of when it's appropriate and when it's not.
So it's Commissioner Aldrich, and then Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for your answer, Director Cotterman. My, it seems like we've run into situations like this before where because it is, it's so kind of dependent, like case-dependent, that it really does need staff to look at it and make a determination on a case-by-case basis. And that's what I think I hear you saying. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. On to Commissioner Olson.
Yes, Commissioner Olson.
Thank you. Commissioner Olson here. So I, in thinking about this, I think it's good that staff is planning to revisit. I agree with Commissioner Aldrich that it's really going to be so situation-specific. And having been an occasional, too often, visitor of the business park over the years for the last few decades, there have been times where there's a big dirt pit, you know, in the business park, and there's roads under construction. Like, we're not taking a fully finished product and building half a road to nowhere. Like, I think it, the evolution over time will make a lot more sense than it kind of, I don't think it's going to be as stark as some of our feedback is concerned about. So I do wonder, is there a way to add it to the presentation as like a follow-up item, just so we don't lose track of it? You know, there's that slide that has a list of things we'll need to do in the future. Is that something we can track a little more formally so that we know we won't lose it?
Yes, we can certainly do that. And we can also include it in the docket.
Okay.
What I'm envisioning, and we haven't fleshed this out yet, but the docket will probably have a, a section just on Canyon Park, follow-up and implementation, so items that we've deferred. And each of those can be prioritized as well.
Okay.
And we can add it to that list.
Other Commissioner comments, Commissioner Hurd.
Thanks, Chair. This is Karsten. I have a technical question on the development regulations for makers. The question is about the increase in floor area ratio for middle or medium-intensity zones within the RGC. My question is if increasing the FAR from 1.75 to 2.0 presents really any substantial change? Or if it's more-- change or if it's more just for consistency because there are other kind of limiting factors like, especially in the, the medium intensity zones, the distance from transit would suggest that those heavy parking minimums are still applicable. And then also height requirements and other, you know, setbacks and stuff are still relevant. So does the 2.0 really give any additional development potential?
Yes, I, I think it's, it's in line with everything else. We were on the fence about it earlier and then internally we are looking at the, the 3D model we did and then there's a perspective development on the, is it the TR, TRCP or I can't get the acronym right on that, on one of the sites. There you go. Thank you. And so when we looked at their development, it was actually equivalent to about 2.0 and that could be built under the existing regulations. So we were kind of looking at, we were sort of looking at how this all worked under the mandatory affordable housing provisions and are we, with these changes and the extra floor height, are we providing enough increase in capacity really to warrant doing the mandatory affordable housing? So it's kind of a part of that whole discussion. And so I think it going up to 2.0 provides a little better argument that we are providing just a little more capacity, capacity to make an, a better argument that the, the mandatory affordable housing provision is, is workable. And so we went around with Mike Stanger and internally with staff and, and so it was kind of a, it was, actually it was a late thing in the last meeting that we had where I just hadn't seen some of the late emails. And so that's the only reason we, why we didn't bring it up two weeks ago because we kind of crossed communication there. But we wanted to bring it up now and for obvious reasons. But we think it's, I, I think it's in line and appropriate.
Thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Alderks.
Thank you. I, I'm going back to the Business Owners Association's concerns. And I wonder if we could put in some wording that it would be on a case by case basis to address the, the provisions about connections? That city staff would look at case by case and, and, you know, consider reaching out to a surrounding developer, developments or businesses to, to work together to, to complete a through block connection instead of leaving one to be completed later at, when it develops next or is developed next. And is, would that be appropriate to add that kind of wording?
So I think what you're starting to describe, Commissioner Alderks, is the type of evaluation that we would do to make sure that we're covering all the bases. So I think it, it's a little bit premature to try to put some language in at this point when we haven't really had a chance to examine this a little more fully.
So is the action that is being taken at this time permissive of that sort of staff review and consideration of the deferral?
So the, the code doesn't really provide for that at this time. It gives us flexibility in terms of location and it gives the applicant flexibility in terms of the type of through block connection. And again, that's something we would, we would also examine as part of that. So they may propose a pedestrian path and we may recommend that it be something that is vehicular, but only for emergency vehicles, for example, because it would improve response times in the park or in the subarea. So again, there are a lot of, there are so many different facets to this that it's really difficult to try to craft some language on the fly this evening that would address that particular issue.
Michael, may I?
Please.
In the planned action ordinance, we do have a fee and lieu section that's on page thirty of the, the draft. But it says planned action applicants may request or the city may require a fee and lieu for some or all of the frontage improvements or capital projects necessary to achieve city standards. And it goes on from there. And I wonder if that might be a vehicle for this issue about when would that through block be completed?
That would be, that sounds like that would be one way that we could do a deferral. Just have, if they wanted to pay a fee upfront, then they wouldn't have to necessarily do the through block connection, but we would have a fee and lieu for that. So it seems like it does allow for that. That may not be desirable in all cases either though. We may want to make sure that it's going to get built. The fee and lieu doesn't always translate into it getting built at some point. So that's one mechanism I think that we do have with the planned action. Lisa, you're And I would ask that we not use the chat function?
Seeing any?
Commissioner Alderks has her hand.
Commissioner Alderks.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Director Cottoman. I've taken some notes as the presentation was going on. And on the EIS slide, I don't know if it's possible to go back to that. But I, I did hear even in comment tonight, some questions kind of about that. And my, my initial question would be since the EIS seems to relate to kind of the environmental cultural aspects of the plan and takes into account not only the environment, but also like affordable housing, I'm wondering if equity could also be listed in, in there as, and can it be part of the EIS?
Well, Michael, do you want me to respond to that?
Please.
The scope of the EIS does touch on issues, as you note, Commissioner, that, that do address housing, jobs and other kind of socioeconomic type of issues and amenities that serve, you know, the population that live or work there. But I think probably the, the EIS contents are sort of the, the scope of its kind of set and the final EIS is going to address your preferred alternative. I, I guess I would say if there's some kind of equity consideration you'd like to make, it would be something that, that could fit well into the subarea plan. And Rachel, maybe you can describe how that is there because I think the framework of the policies are something that the city would consider as development occurs and investments are made in this subarea. So I think that can capture the equity considerations you'd like to have.
Yeah, I'll add to that if I may. Okay. In the thresholds of significance in the EIS socioeconomic section, one of them was changes to employment mix resulting in involuntary economic displacement of businesses. So we did address, I think, one of your more direct concerns about businesses themselves getting displaced. And that led to the strategies that you do see in the plan. For example, the removal of the residential use from the old RAC zone across the employment zones. And then in addition, the strategies to support affordable commercial space and any redevelopment and the partnership and nonprofit relationship building and relocation assistance ideas that are also in the subarea plan about working with cultural anchors and people using that affordable commercial space in the area today.
Thank you, Rachel. I think that's a good direct link from the environmental review, you know, to how it influenced the plan.
Other commissioners? Mr. Assistant.
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. Thanks, Commissioner Alderks, for bringing up the EIS issue. And thank you to Director Cottoman for sending us the EIS comments. I know that this is a little bit late in the game. However, just briefly paging through the EIS comments that we received, I noticed that there was a pretty comprehensive email from Karen Walters of the Muckel Shoot Tribe, which I believe has fishing rights in the waters of North Creek. And she had a lot of concerns. And I wanted to see if there's any way we could quickly look at the concerns that she brought. We could just see where those are addressed in the EIS. The salmon crossing inventory, bank erosion, flood payment mapping and the beaver issue. Throwing it out there. Thank you.
And I believe a lot of those are addressed in the, both in the plan and the EIS mitigation. So Lisa, do you want to touch on that?
Sure, I'll start first with the beaver considerations while I'm getting my notes together. But the, there, there was reference in the draft EIS to beaver and beaver habitat and mitigation measures related to that that did flow into the subarea plan and in the planned action mitigation measures. You'll see reference to protection of beaver habitat in the subarea. Regarding fish passage and stream inventories, the city does, is aware of that inventory from the state fish and wildlife and does use that and does consider fish passage when projects are designed. And the permit process is such that there would be a hydro, hydraulic project, HPA permit. And that applies no matter what. It's a state permit. And so when the city goes to design some of the projects that may affect streams, the city would not only follow its own critical area regulations, but it would still follow the state permit process. Some of these same concerns, I might add, were expressed during scoping and the city responded with its process for how it designs capital facilities. And that's in the appendix to the draft EIS. I think it's appendix A.
If I could add on the beavers. One of the plan's implementation actions is to look more carefully at that because it's very complicated. The purpose of the beaver dams is to flood. So it actually increases an already very floodable area. So it was too complicated for the scope of this project to look at development standards that support that. But it is one of the action items to look at that in the future.
Not seeing any. Then time to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Olson?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Is there a second to the motion to close the public hearing? Commissioner Hurd?
This is Karsten. I second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing on the Canyon Park Subarea Draft Plan, Draft Development Regulations and Draft and Action Ordinance. All in favor of closing the public hearing? And I see unanimous from the commissioners. So the public hearing is closed. Cottoman, next step is that discussion of our recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So I, you can start with, if you want to go through the findings and recommendation or you could start with a motion. I guess probably go through the finding first and then get a motion on, on the findings and recommendation would be the way to do it.
Okay, so. Again, I'll be proceeding with findings first?
Yes.
All right, so I'm looking at what is attachment one in the package we were sent. It is the Canyon Park Subarea Plan Amendment and Action Ordinance. There is a section called findings. It has five items in it. Commissioners, review those findings and very comments to the findings.
I'm going to see if I can open that document.
If you'd like, I could share the version with the updates of the speakers and comments made since the packet.
If you have that handy, Dave. Yes, Mr. Chair, would you like, like Dave to share that on the screen?
Yes, please. Especially when we get to the next part.
Findings, Dave?
Move to the top of the document?
Yeah. There we go.
Okay. I'm expanding it on my own screen, so. Okay, so looking through the findings, I think they're pretty straightforward. Finding one, any question? Findings one through five, please take a look slowly. One, that's the second one, geographic location. Third, the proposed action, what we have for us.
And these are all pretty standard findings.
Fourth is a listing of the meetings going all the way back to 2017. And then the fifth one goes to the notice which has been provided regarding this action. Pause here and scroll across the ribbon and see if commissioners, question or comment Seeing none. Then we move into our deliberations and this speaks to what the commission and commissioners have gone through this process. So have us go through each of these, see if there are any questions, any modifications of the deliberations as indicated here. And then if appropriate, whether there are any additional items which would be added in our deliberations. And Director Cottoman, did you suggest a motion at this point?
I think we can wait until you get through the findings and the recommendation, Mr. Chair, and then make a motion. And, and depending on how the recommendation is worded, if it covers everything, then your motion could be just to approve attachment, approve the wording in the attachment.
So item six here describes the planning commission's specific findings. Based on the testimony received, questions, comments? For each of these, I'm going to pause and scroll through. I saw, I don't see any indications of discussion. So moving on to seven, statement regarding Canyon Park. And scrolling, seeing no indication from commissioners. We'll move to number eight. Talking about the technology companies, the lead use model we're using here. Concerns, questions, comments? Seeing none. Number nine.
Jenny Alderks here. Can I make a comment on number seven?
Yes, Commissioner Alderks.
Just a comment. I appreciate the inclusion of the international markets in number seven. Thank you for adding that.
And Commissioner Vleet?
Yes, and I, with regards to number seven as well, would there be any benefit to capitalizing life science and like making it stand out more? Or is it written as, maybe it's written correctly? I don't know about that. I don't know about that.
I would defer to Director Cotterman whether there is a style aspect to documents on capitalism.
That's a good question. I, normally I would say no to capitalizing it because it's, it's sort of a generic descriptive term. However, I, there may be a term of art that is life science cluster. I think that's something, Rachel, can you help me out here? Is that something that was in the plan as far as a special designation for that area?
Let me look back. I think it was something more like life sciences innovation hub or, let me look.
If it's, if it's something specific like that, that's more a term of art, then I think it could be capitalized.
Great. I'm fine either way.
So how about we look at eight, and if Rachel comes back with something, we'll, we'll buy back in and capitalize if appropriate. So point eight here, describing the technology companies, their workforce, the use model. And I do not see any commissioners and, oh, Commissioner Alderks.
Thank you, Chair. Jenny Alderks here. I, I love the description here that it seems to cover sort of the vision of what would be included to attract a diverse and younger workforce. The question that I would ask is, would it be appropriate? I see recreational opportunities, but to be even more specific than that, like including parks, referencing the comment that we received today about, about the development of a park in the, in the subarea.
That's certainly appropriate if the commission would like to have that language, yes.
Commissioners, Mr. Peastrop?
One question I had, is this really picks up a good picture of what happens during the week? But as a community on a weekend, what are we looking to attract to this area? The residents of Bothell want to go have dinner. They want to go to a park. They want to, I, I don't see in here where we're capturing our community. What's the benefit for, for people that live here?
Okay, we can, we can add some language to that effect as well.
Commissioner Olson?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with Commissioner Peastrop. I, I think we saw in the community surveys that people are interested in kind of building a, a subarea that is open on the weekends too. Because like that whole business park is pretty closed down. I pretty much only go to the Starbucks on the weekends. So it would be, I mean, in normal times. So I think it would be cool to include something about how a lot of Bothell, younger or not, is really moving toward wanting to, to use other modes of transportation. You know, the scooters have been really popular here. You know, we want to be able to scoot down to the subarea on the weekends and, you know, have fun. I'm being a little flippant because, but you know what I mean.
See, and it, it added including parks.
And that's just picking up on your suggestions. We can decide whether you want to go with those or not.
Say including restaurants and recreational shops, including parks. Maybe to my grammar mode.
Hope this works, sorry. Maybe we have our own paragraph in regards to trying to, trying to piggyback off what Commissioner Olson said is, is, you know, an area where we can just spend a day. You can have, like have lunch, have dinner, you know, meet up with friends, take a walk. I don't know how we can incorporate that because paragraph eight really talks about the companies and those who work there. I like to see a, a paragraph of, hey, this is what, this is going to offer people that live in Bothell or live in Kirkland that want to take the bus and really have a centralized congregation. I don't know if I'm using the right words, but.
I, I think I'm, I'm hearing, I'm hearing the gist of what, what you're talking about there. And I agree that probably a diff, a new paragraph would work better rather than trying to make this paragraph serve two purposes, which was really focused more on the, the technology companies. So if we say that Canyon Park can also serve as a draw to the, the wider Bothell community in terms of the amenities and activities that it provides. And we can elaborate on that language a little bit. But I think that's generally the, that you're getting at, Commissioner Peistrop. Okay. And then, Mr. Chair, also just getting back to Commissioner Velez's question about the life science cluster. I did find a policy in the draft plan that refers to seeking a designation as a life science cluster, and it is not capitalized there. So if we want to be consistent, then I'd suggest we leave it as is.
I see a couple of hands up. Commissioner Curd first, then Commissioner Alderks. And I see Rachel also raising her hand, so let's go in that order.
Thanks, Chair. This is Carsten. For point number eight, I want to recognize that although maybe there is a tendency for younger workforces at technology companies, it's, that might be kind of restrictive language. And part of the, part of the focus of the commission has been making places that work for everybody. And so I, I would maybe encourage or consider change from a younger workforce with different expectations and lifestyles than the traditional nine to five worker. Maybe just recognizing that, you know, a modern workforce is different than historic because it does comprise the people of a variety of different ages and lifestyles. So that's my two cents.
Commissioner Curd, if we just struck the word younger, would that address your, your comment?
Yes.
Or should we replace younger with diverse? More diverse.
Okay. That, I think that works. I'm seeing thumbs up on that one.
And we also had Mr. Alderks and Commissioner Gustafson.
Thank you, Chair. Jenny Alderks here. I would like to add on to the suggestion for the new item number nine. We include language that includes the term family friendly. I would like to see that these spaces are not only attracting, you know, like specifically families being a child-friendly place to be and for parents to, to spend time with children there.
Okay. And Commissioner Gustafson, did you also want to weigh in?
I think Sarah Gustafson here. Thank you, Commissioner Curd, for your question. And it got me started thinking. I don't know if we have enough time to delve into this right now, but it's not only the tech workers, it is also the traditional nine to five office workers who face with pressures of transportation and who might want alternatives as well. And I don't know if we're going to take it too far in a direction that waters down their idea of technology workers wanting a different alternative. But as a nine to five, very traditional office worker, I want those things too. So I don't know if there's a broader societal shift that we might want to reference here.
Mr. Chair, if I could ask a question?
Sure.
And this is for Dave, because I think some of this language came from existing language, either in the plan or some of the background information?
Yes, this was drawn from, from some of the plan goals.
Okay, so, and, and that's fine. And I just, the reason I asked the question is I want to make sure that the, the purpose of the, these statements are to provide some, some basis and some background for the commission's recommendation of the plan itself. So we want to also make sure that we maintain that, that link, that relationship to the plan and what was the, the purpose that was listed in that plan. So I, I think it's fine to add things to this, but we want to make sure we don't lose the piece that's, that's part of the reason we're doing the plan as well. So it may be that we could take Commissioner Gustafson's suggestion and add that without taking out the, the traditional nine to five, the, the tech worker piece of it.
So, Commissioner Peistrop and then Commissioner Velez? Okay, you're muted.
Sorry. Back to number eight. Instead of saying technology companies, including life sciences, can we just say companies that comprise the Canyon Park subarea? Because you're talking about not just technical companies, life sciences, but you, you also mentioned international and national. You know, can we just change that to say?
What was, what was the suggestion again, the wording you had?
The only, maybe saying companies that, or businesses within the Canyon Park subarea tend to have instead of, unless you want to really focus on just technic, technological company, technology companies, life sciences, there, there's more than that within the Canyon Park subarea. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Canyon Park, yeah, company, yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, it, it seems like we're really tailoring to, to one specific type of company and, and, which is great. I mean, they, there's some anchor tenants there. But the park itself is comprised of many other companies that, that don't, you know, follow that path.
Okay, so I think if, if I could suggest, I think Dave's wording there addresses Commissioner Peistrop's. And then if we continue that along that sentence, the more diverse workforce with different expectations and lifestyles, and maybe strike the, then the traditional nine to five office worker. Because now we're broadening our description of the companies and the workforce itself. And I think that in general. Yeah, one of the commissioners made the point that it's, you know, even as a nine to five worker, they still want those things in here. So I think it's more important that we keep what the desire is for the commute options and, and other things. Is that acceptable to the commission?
I'm looking across the, see some nodding heads and thumbs ups. So we're going to say we're good there unless I hear.
And, and I want to also just remind the commission that we're not, we don't have to capture every single thing in these either. We want to make sure that we capture the, you know, the general sentiment and the important points of the commission. These are your findings and your deliberations.
We're not putting the whole plan in our corporations. Okay, so that was eight. We also added nine, and I think we had a consensus or nine. Coming back up amongst you. All right, how about number 10? Talking about the influence in transportation.
That's really a state, that's just a statement of fact.
Yes.
Can we scroll on to the next page?
Yes, next page, number 11. I think that is also pretty much a statement of fact. And not seeing any. New number 12. Another statement of fact, I think. Yes, Commissioner Alderks?
Thank you, Chair. Jenny Alderks here. Just a comment. I appreciate the inclusion of social equity issues specifically related to affordable housing. It doesn't necessarily completely capture our discussions and deliberations around equity. But it, I think maybe, maybe separately, it discusses international markets previously, and it discusses social equity in terms of affordable housing here. But I wonder if there might be a more clear statement of, of equity that could, that maybe it would be separate from number 12. So, sorry, a little rambly, but I'm glad that this is included and it says social equity issues related to affordable housing. But I also think that there is a, there is an item missing perhaps that captures our full deliberations around the topic of diversity, equity, and inclusion.
So you're speaking at point here on diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Yeah, an additional one after 12, after 13, whatever our new numbers are.
Okay, I see Commissioner Curd. Any, any comments or discussion around Commissioner Alderks' suggestion? A new point or using the commission's deliberations around diversity, equity, and inclusion? Is there, we should have something explicitly at some point?
Chair, Jenny Alderks here. You're breaking up a bit, so it can be a little difficult to understand you. I'm getting most of a sense of what you're saying, but others might be struggling too.
Okay, let me try again, moving the microphone a little bit. So my question to the commissioners is, is there a desire and a consensus that a separate point in our deliberation be added identifying, recognizing the discussion around diversity, equity, and inclusion in this plan? Commissioner Gustafson?
Sarah Gustafson here. Thank you. Yes, I first want to express my support for this. I have some language that because perhaps you've mostly drawn from the excellent letter that was sent, but I can start adding things to the chat box if that's helpful. If we want to workshop it now or if that's not appropriate. I just want to express my support for adding that language in it. Dave and Mike.
Well, at the conclusion here, what we're looking to is, is to adopt this document. So if we want something included, I think we should add sentences now. It doesn't have to be a lengthy discussion, perhaps just recognition. And I see that recognition is happening as we. During the course of this discussion, the commission did recognize the importance of diversity, equity, and inclusion in the planning and development of Canyon Park.
And, Mr. Chair, I'm, I haven't yet seen a consensus on the part of the commission to include something here. I think we can draft some language if that commission would like to see that included. It can certainly be added. But we need a consensus on the part of the commission to include something at this point.
Okay, let's do a quick, and it's a little challenging because you're all, you're.
Dave, can you, can you unshare for a second just so everybody can see everyone? Dave, can you, can you un-share for a second, just so everybody can see everyone? Thank you.
Okay, I can see all, so, is there a consensus among the commissioners regarding adding, uh, recognition of our, of diversity, equity and inclusion in our deliberations? Thumbs up, or, so I see one, two, three, four, so that, that does have a majority of the commission, uh, is this a vote item, or it just, uh, kind of...
Doesn't have to be a formal vote, I don't think, no, it just, I just wanted to make sure before we spent time delivering language that there was, there was enough support to include that.
Okay, and, and in, in the context of what we're doing here, I don't see it as being a, a, a major, I think it was the topic that was discussed a number of times, deliberations, I would think just recognizing it is what the interest is.
Yes, I believe that, I believe that's appropriate to include some language recognizing that this was part of the deliberation of the commission, that's what this section is for.
So, let's give that a try.
Dave, could you share that again, please?
While we're sharing, I would say that, uh, a number of the commissioners did recognize that it is in a number of other points, so it's not a matter of pointing out an omission here, it's just wanting to stand alone to have the, uh, recognition. Development and implementation of the plan, would that be sufficient?
Chair, Jenny Alderks here.
Yes, Commissioner Alderks.
Thank you, um, so, some draft language that I had written down includes equity analysis tools that can be integrated into the plan, um, specifically because we had, we were discussing the need for equity analysis of, of plans going forward by, by staff. Um, yeah, that was cool, thank you.
If I could suggest that that referred to the implementation of the plan rather than future plans, because this is really just about Canyon Park.
These findings, yes. Commissioner Olson.
Um, thank you, um, I'm hesitant that, in that I don't want to overstate any work that we did, we did talk about diversity, equity and inclusion, but I think we were limited by, um, you know, the city doesn't have a staff member that's focusing on this, some of the stuff we talked about was really in the future, not stuff that we used to develop this plan, so I don't, I don't want to play up what we did. Um, so, Director Cotterman, I'm wondering, did we actually build in equity analysis tools in this plan that we're sending to City Council, I guess I'm, I'm not sure that that's sort of hardcoded, for lack of a better term, can you help me refresh on that?
I think we put some action in the plan that talked to that, um, and I'll defer to Rachel for any specifics on that, but I, I would agree with you, it's the, the equity analysis tools were not part of the development of the plan, which is why I suggested that it refer to the implementation of the plan, because I believe that was the discussion direction that we ended up with, with the commission. Rachel, do you have some other specific language regarding the action that I know we included?
Yeah, the action was to do an equity impact analysis with an emphasis on, um, reaching out to, uh, affected community members, let me see if they can...
Is that more toward implementation though?
It is more towards implementation, um, and the anti-displacement measures, I mean, some, a- as I described earlier, some are built into the plan, but many of them are actions that will require implementation following the plan.
And that's why I've taken that piece of it out, uh, and as a closing clause that just deals with implementation.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it, I just, I, I wouldn't want to overstate anything, so thank you.
And that, and that's a good point, I think it's, I think it's valuable to recognize that this was part of the deliberation of the commission, and to highlight that, because we did spend some time on it, uh, but, but I, I agree with your point, Commissioner Olson, we don't want to overstate what was actually included or done as part of the plan either.
This was written there, two parts to this one, one, that it was part of our discussions is important, and then second, moving forward in the implementation, we would want to do the analysis. So, scan back and forth, Commissioner Alderks.
Thank you Chair, Jenny Alderks here, um, I, I agree that the, um, that the way that it has been parsed, I actually think is done quite well here, that it recognizes we, we deliberated about it during development, and we requested equity impact analysis tools using in the implementation, so it, it's nicely divided out, um, so that it reflects both the work that we did and the recommendations that we're making, so, thank you, uh, David Boyd, for putting that in, I think it's well done.
You're muted, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Olson.
Thank you Chair, and seconding thanks to Dave for writing that, I do appreciate it, um, it settles well with what I was thinking, um, I am going to pivot, I think we're at that point, to number 14, um, I would like to add some kind of language that calls out that focusing density where we have this infrastructure, where we have current and expected transit infrastructure helps the rest of Boffel grow, um, in a better way, you know, we're going to get growth if we can focus it, where there's going to be some amenities that help people who move there, you know, not need as many single-occupant vehicle trips and all of that, obviously, I've said a lot of words that we probably don't all want to put in there, so I, I'm wondering if there's any interest in just clarifying that, um, you're intentionally focusing the density here, because that's where the infrastructure is.
And Commissioner Olson, if you could go back and look at the new number 12, it does talk about proximity to existing and planned frequent transit, is, would that be a better place to add something, or does that address your, your comment in any way?
Um, yeah, I think between 12 and 14, especially with the ad that, that Dave did, Dave, I think is a mind reader, I've decided tonight, um, so, I, I'm, I'm pretty happy with it, I just, I want to call out, um, that we're not, it's not density just so we can have some tall buildings, you know, there really is a purpose behind focusing the growth there.
Okay. Shall we move on? You're muted, Mr. Chair. I heard a comment...
Apparently I have trouble focusing on both the ribbon and the mute button, so...
I heard someone say today that, uh, "you're muted" is the phrase of the year, so that's...
Only when coupled with please be... So, moving on, I think, uh, 15 is pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I think, uh, 15, 16, 17, going by the new numbers, are, again, more statements of, of fact in terms of process and procedures.
Yes, so...
Likewise, the list of exhibits, which Dave has been updating in real time. There we see the new exhibits, and tonight's testimony.
Okay, so, let's look at the conclusions, we've got three conclusions, there we go. So, first one, Commissioner Olson.
This is really, sorry, I've been advanced, um, for number one, should we do recommended plan, comma, code amendments, comma, and plan, it's like there's two ands there.
Yes.
So, don't hate me.
Nope, you're, you're, you picked the same net I did.
Okay. Crossed, so their comments on conclusion one.
And the same thing in, uh, number two?
Number two.
The same grammatical change?
Commissioner Alderks, if you'd like to chime in, yes?
Yes, uh, thank you Chair, Jenny Alderks here, um, on item three, the, um, I feel like there needs to be an adjective in front of welfare, and I'd like to know specifically what welfare we're referring to, we already have public health, um, and so maybe public health, safety and welfare is all public, um, but I, the thought that came to me was economic, um, we're also looking for the economic welfare of this region, of the region, and its redevelopment, um, so, thoughts, feedback from staff on that?
That's, that's almost a term of art, uh, in government language, when we talk about public health, safety and welfare, uh, the public is modifying, or, uh, I'm sure I'm using the right term there, it's modifying all of those, it's, it's public health, public safety and public welfare, and welfare can be defined very broadly.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Was that me, sorry, you got a little...
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Olson.
Thanks, um, code is, is capitalized in three, but not where it shows up in one and two, I wasn't sure if there was a reason for the difference. I don't write government things for a living, so I never...
The truth, uh, um, in the, my time at the city, there have been, uh, people who always capitalize code, uh, in this kind of context, and others that never did, so, um, we can go either way, but, um, I just made the change to make it consistent with one and two.
Okay, thank you.
And Dave, I had a question also, and, and this is more tradition for these, uh, findings, conclusions and recommendations, do we typically just note the code amendments as being in the best interest, or do we include the other actions as well?
Uh...
Seems a little odd to me that we, we just call out the code.
Uh, yeah, I, I agree, it, it had never really occurred to me, um, this is kind of, sort of boilerplate language that we, we use on, with slight modifications on, on these findings, but, uh, we could certainly add, uh, the plan and planned action ordinance as we do in one and two here.
With the commission's consent, I would like to add those. Thank you.
Right, so with that, we are on to our recommendation that, uh, the City Council moves forward and adopts the Canyon Park Subarea Plan Code Amendments and Planned Action, soon these findings, so, I would look, I believe the next step would be a motion from the Commission to adopt this, uh, attachment as amended, is that correct?
As amended, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, I was going to ask for that clarification to make sure that the two amendments that, uh, to the code that Bob talked about would be included, uh, as part of your motion, thank you. So, Dave, I think you could probably un-share that now? Thank you.
I can see you all again, so, I would look for a motion to adopt Attachment One, the, Planning Commission Findings, Conclusions and Recommendations as amended tonight, is the motion? Commissioner Curd.
Thanks, this is Karsten, I saw that someone else is going to do this, but now I will.
Okay.
I move to approve and adopt the Planning Commission Findings, Conclusions and Recommendations as amended, um, as shown in Attachment One for the Canyon Park Subarea Plan and Regulations Update.
Second, Commissioner Olson.
I second Commissioner Curd's motion.
Is there discussion or a motion to adopt?
Mr. Chair, could I ask for clarification, just to make sure that the intent is to include the code amendments, or the code, I should say code revisions, they're technically not an amendment at this point, because it doesn't exist yet, um, the code revisions that we talked about this evening, is that included in the, uh, motion? Commissioner Curd?
That is correct.
Thank you, just wanted to make sure we had that on the record, thank you.
So, that is the motion, and Commissioner Olson, you're second included, then, so, presumption?
Correct.
All right, any discussion around the motion? There's insufficient discussion around this topic, I see, all right, I will ask for a vote of the commissioners, um, and Director Cotterman, a show of hands sufficient, or do you want to go through a rule call on this?
Uh, I think a show of hands is sufficient, Mr. Chair, if you can verify that everyone has voted in one fashion or another.
Okay, I can see all the commissioners, so all in favor of adopting, uh, Attachment One as amended, and the amendments to everything we discussed tonight, uh, please indicate by raising your hand. And I do see unanimous consent to adopt, so, the findings, the Planning Commission findings, conclusions and recommendations are adopted this evening. I want to thank staff and the consultants for all of the work done on this, and I would say both current and former staff, recognizing a lot of work done by, uh, a staff member who has since retired, so, thank you all for this, I think it's, uh, an excellent job and it'll serve the community well, so, good work.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I would, I would echo those kudos to, especially to our consultant team, uh, you've seen some of the, the key folks here this evening, we've had a lot of other people that have been involved, um, I think, you know, Rachel and, and Bob and Lisa in particular, and, and I would also add Carmen Quan to that, Carmen is with Fair and Peers and did, uh, all the transportation work, and certainly others, but there was a lot of time and, and work that went into this, and I just wanted to send, give them my thanks as well, I've, it's been a pleasure working with all of them, and we're not quite done yet, so, but, uh, this is an opportunity for, for that, and I also want to give kudos to staff, I think, you know, Dave and Steve Morikawa in particular from transportation, I know have put a lot of time, and Dave's had to pick up several loose ends that Bruce left us with, and I say that with my presumption that Bruce is watching this evening, just as he was last night at council, yeah, so, and thank you commissioners for all of your time and hard work on this, and all of your good questions and feedback, it's, it's gotten us quite a ways on this project, little ways to go, but we're very close and, and appreciate all the effort. Oh, I also should add, Deputy Mayor Zorn's last night wanted me to convey her thanks specifically to the Planning Commission. Oh, I also should add Deputy Mayor Zorn's last night wanted me to convey her thanks specifically to the planning commission for all of your good work on the Canyon Park project. So thank you from from Deputy Mayor Zorn's as well.
All right, well, thank you all. And I think this is a milestone, so celebrate it and then move to our move on through our agenda. There are no, there is no study session scheduled tonight. So the next item is old business. Is there any old business for us to be updated on?
I'd.
I think our consultants are checking out, so goodbye.
Thank you. I didn't have any old business. Dave, did you want to say something about the schedule under this or staff reports?
Either way, I'll go ahead and do it now. The we had originally planned to bring back the critical areas code amendments in a public hearing on the 16th of this month. But we've decided to defer that until January 20th to give give us and our consultants a chance to take all your input into a draft, some draft code amendments and make sure that we have time for the Department of Ecology to review those. So that when we do do bring them back to you, we've we've got their their input as well.
Commissioner Olson.
I did have a question about that. I read the letter from the, I think it was Habitat Bank folks or person. And I wasn't sure if they were writing in as some kind of like licensed or like like an expert, you know, or if it was just a private company who runs mitigation banks. Like I would love context around what they were saying to help me understand. You know, anyway, you know what I mean?
I think they're both. They are fisheries might, well, I don't know if they're fisheries biologists, but they are experts in the field. They have worked to establish a habitat bank at the Keller Farm. And 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 we've heard from them before. I think we've conveyed some of their comments from from other members of that company. As well as from from individuals at the state and and at ecology. Who have also invested a lot of time in in reviewing those, the habitat bank, that particular one and other in lieu fee programs. So I'm planning to add his comment to the the exhibits for the critical areas amendments. And and I've already forwarded to our consultant, so we will we'll have a chance to address some of those comments on January 20.
Thank you.
Okay, any other old business or reports from staff?
No old business, Mr. Chair, but do you have a few things I wanted to note for the commission this evening under staff reports? First is that next week, the UW students are wrapping up the project. So we've not seen any products yet, but I'm anxiously looking forward to seeing what they have to present next week. And as I mentioned previously, we'll figure out a time if we can, based on their schedule, to have them present to the planning commission at a future date. So I don't know if that'll be the December meeting or maybe the January meeting, but we will certainly try to make that work. I think that would be beneficial for the commission as well as for the students, and they were excited about the possibility as well. So I'll have more to report on that at least on the 16th. I will let you know that we have hired a senior planner. We have not finalized everything yet, so I can't tell you anymore about about him. But we have a tentative start date of January 5th, so certainly look forward to introducing him to the commission at your meeting on the 20th. And very excited to have someone coming on board, I have to tell you. So last night at the city council, we, yes, Dave summed it up very well with one gesture. Thank you, Dave. So last night at city council, they passed an interim ordinance for allowing temporary use of private parking for outdoor dining. This is the same thing that was passed back in June. So just to let you know that that happened last night. We have this month, we have a total of five public hearings that community development is involved in, including the one we had tonight here. And then we have four coming up at city council, three next week. One is Dave's continued public hearing on the public space for downtown. So we hope to wrap that up next week. We also have another interim ordinance that's going to the council next Tuesday. Again, related to COVID and trying to provide some flexibility for applicants. We have a new building code that's going into effect February 1st. It's been postponed a couple of times and it's created some uncertainty and lack of predictability for applicants who don't know which code they're they're developing for. So we're going to allow a temporary exemption from the city code requirement that says you cannot submit any construction related permits such as a building permit until your site plan is approved. And there's a very good reason we put that in place, but we're going to relax that for a short time to allow for some submittal of building building permit applications in particular to get in ahead of the the new code, the 2018 building code that'll go into effect on the first of February. So just to let you know about that. And then the third one has to do with school impact fees. This is an annual amendment to our impact fee ordinance for schools, impact fees, and that will be a presentation by the school district. They're actually proposing to decrease the fees this year, which is a first in my experience. And then there'll also be a brief staff presentation next week to the council on the buildable lands report that we're working on, as well as some preliminary information on growth targets. We're having discussions already with King County about a range for different jurisdictions and what those targets might be. These will feed into the comprehensive plan update that we're going to be starting on in about another year and a half or two. So it's very important and I will see about time to get something before the planning commission, a similar briefing on that as well. And that'll be good information for you going forward. And I've already thanked the project team and the commission for all of your work on Canyon Park. But I think that's all I have for this evening, Mr. Chair. And again, thank you all for all your work on this.
Thank you. Mr. Gustafson.
Hi, sorry. Sarah Gutson here. First echoing the thanks to everyone here. It's been quite a journey. It's been wonderful to hear from our city as well. And wow, it seems like Dave and Michael have a very busy December. I did just want to confirm that there is a December 16th meeting.
Yes.
And the reason why I wanted to double confirm is there is a Lower North Creek Stormwater Management Meeting that day. And I think I got an email from Karen at Stormwater Management saying there was no planning commission on the 16th. And she talked to us, Community Development about this, so there's no conflict. And I'm wondering, oh, what's going on here is, I guess I won't be able to attend that.
Who did you hear that from?
Karen, I got forwarded a message from, sorry, not Karen, excuse me, Janet, Janet Gere at the Stormwater.
Yes, I communicated with her about the that we were not going to be bringing the critical areas regulations back that they, I didn't realize. So is is their meeting in conflict with planning commission? Is it an evening?
It's at 7:00 PM. I believe it's at 7:00 PM that Wednesday.
Okay. Well, that's not ideal, but the item that is coming to that we are bringing back that night is are the housing amendments, the corner locked duplexes and shore plats. So at least it's not the same, similar topics that are conflicting, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for bringing that to my attention. I'll I'll communicate with Janet and I don't know if there's anything we can do at this point. At least we don't have to worry about being in looking the same room, right?
All right, so we will move to reports for members. And I know that Commissioner Vleet would like to say a few words during this item. So Dave?
My apologies. So yeah, I just wanted to take a couple of minutes if I could, Chair and Commission to because tonight will be my last meeting. Because I will be changing my residence out of the city of Bothell over to the Kitsap Peninsula. And it's been a wonderful experience to be on the Bothell Planning Commission. I have enjoyed it thoroughly as a commissioner and as chair. And I just wanted to say a couple of things. Words of advice from being on the commission for a few years. First off, one of my is it's okay, it is definitely okay to vote against a motion, even if you're the only one. And you should never feel like people are going to think badly of you for doing it. I can remember back to my, I think it was my second meeting as a commissioner years ago, and we had a climate change thing that it seemed like at the time, every time we were bringing up an issue, everybody was like, oh, in favor. So nobody voted against anything. So I really wanted to vote against it. I abstained and to this day I regret not saying no during that time. But you can always say no, so just know you can do that. And this is going to seem ironic right now, but just try to be concise with your comments and to maybe I this, these things I'm saying are because these are things that I wish I had done earlier on, is to listen more and talk less. Just because the planning commission meetings go until 9:00 PM doesn't mean they have to last until 9:00 PM. That's my kind of my feelings on meetings and things that maybe I wish I could do have done differently. As far as like affordable and or green eco-friendly housing. I have mentioned it a few times, but I generally think that the most affordable and greenest house is the one that's already there. So it'd be wonderful if the city of Bothell can continue to incentivize or require developers to retain older houses. Because that's really the, I feel like it's really a way to get an affordable housing. And I think what the city is looking at with regards to duplexes and triplexes is really going to kind of help retain some of those older housing units and maybe make them kind of bring them bring them into an age where maybe people don't need as much space or requiring as much space. Another one is encouraging or requiring renewable energy production in the city. I've always thought, you know, we shouldn't just be using energy, we should be producing some of our own. So any anything we can do on that front, I think is super cool. So I could go on about other things, but I just want to take the time to say a special word of thanks to a few people. And one of them is current Washington State Representative and and council member Gina Duer, who helped me a lot in the past. Tippy Mayor James Zorn's, James, current council member James McNeil and past vice chair from the planning commission, Patrick Cape. Also, there was an interesting, oh, an interesting story. When I first got on the planning commission, I I only received a four to three vote by the by the city council at the time. It was a three, three vote. And I want to, I want to say a special thanks to then deputy mayor Dell Spivey. Dell and I did not see eye to eye the same on a lot of things. But we did have a respect for each other and I thought it was really neat because I had run previously for the commission that I gotten beaten out. And he said that night, he said, you know, I know what it feels like to run for something a few times and not get it. And so he gave me his his vote that night and I'll be ever forever grateful for that because I wouldn't have even been on the planning commission. So thank you for that. And then lastly, I guess, to all you commissioners, it's been wonderful being with you. I wish we could be together in person. Hopefully you guys will get that chance this next year again. But a special thanks to former senior planner Bruce Blackburn. A huge thanks to senior planner Dave Boyd, who has listened to me ramble on about a lot of things, and I really appreciate your guidance through it all. And then a final thanks to to Community Development Director Michael Cotterman. And you, I've worked with several different directors and I really especially appreciate working with you. So thank you all for letting me ramble on with those comments and I will miss you. I will I will be around. I will still be retaining our home in Bothell on Lower Maywood there, so I will see you all around. And I'm just so, I'm just so impressed with the planning commission right now. And I'm really grateful for the people who are taking the time to serve for something that's essentially an unpaid position. So thank you all. I appreciate it.
And I believe Director Cotterman would like to say a few words at this point.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is my opportunity to rebut everything that Commissioner Vleet said. But I I also want to say the feeling's been very mutual working with you, David. It's been a pleasure for the almost three years now that I've been with the city. You were the chair when I came on and you were very patient with me as I was learning the ropes and very helpful in that regard. I've always found your input, whether it was on the commission or in meetings that we had, prep meetings we had ahead of commission meetings, that that you were very thoughtful and very thorough in how you approach all the issues that have come before the commission. And I think you've shown tremendous leadership, not only as the chair, but also in just how you've conducted yourself and and the input that you've provided throughout the the process and all the things that you've been involved in. I don't know how many years you've been on the commission, but you've certainly contributed a lot to the city just in the short time that I've been here. And on behalf of of the department, certainly, and I think the city manager. And for me personally, I want to thank you for all of your your service on the commission and everything that you've done. I think you, one of the other things that I've always appreciated and admired about you and and your your discussion, your deliberation, your contribution to the the commission's work is that you take the broader view of things. You consider the entire community. And even, as you said, even sometimes when it may not be your perspective or your opinion or or your your view on something, you may disagree with it, but you consider it and you take that you know, as part of your your discussion and your decision. And I respect that. I think that's that's a good trait in any any official that has to really look out for the broader interests of the community. So I just want to thank you again for all of your time and and everything. And I'm going to miss working with you on the commission, but hope we stay in touch and certainly wish you all the best out on the peninsula. So thank you.
Thank you.
My privilege at this time as well. I'd like to thank Commissioner Vleet for his service. He was the chair when I came on the commission and his leadership is a model that I aspire to. I appreciate your leadership. No, thank you, David. You've done an excellent job and and really have been an inclusive leader. So I appreciate that. You will be missed. We'll try to carry on the your passions for green building and as we go forward and you will be missed and we wish you best and hope to see you around. So thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Olson.
Sneak in really quick and just say, thank you, Commissioner Vleet. I don't know if you remember, but last year I attended a few commission meetings just as a resident. I really don't like giving public comment. It makes me very, very nervous. Despite liking to talk, I don't like to do it in front of a group. And you were, you and the commission were so welcoming and made it so much less stressful than it could have been. And that really influenced my decision to try and join the planning commission this last year. So thank you very much for that. And I I appreciate it. So just wanted to call you out for that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Curd.
Thanks, Chair. And David. Yes, I echo everything that was said. And I would also say when I came on the commission, I I didn't really know. I didn't have a lot of perspective on what sorts of things the commission was even deliberating on or whatever. And Bothell has recently, in the recent past, had quite divisive leadership. And so I think that the stability and the inclusion that you specifically guided the commission on, that's something that. that's something that I treasure on this current Commission, and it's your legacy, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Senior Planner Boyd?
I'll echo everything that's been said and also say that I think, David, that you've grown a lot in your time on the Commission, and the Commission has changed a lot in your time. And I think you've been at different ends kind of of the spectrum on the Commission. And sometimes that maybe wasn't super comfortable for you. So I appreciate what you said about having the courage to vote, be the only one voting no. I don't remember that precise instance, but I appreciate your willingness to put yourself out there. And if we were together in City Hall tonight, one tradition that we haven't always stuck with is to give the outgoing Commissioners their nameplate. Not much, but a tiny little token. So give us your address, and we can, we'll mail it to you if we ever get back to City Hall.
Sounds good. Thanks, Dave.
You bet.
Okay, other reports from members, comments? I would ask if there is a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Vleet?
A motion, I move to adjourn?
Is there a second? Commissioner Olson?
Seconded.
All in favor of adjourning? All right. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you especially again, Commissioner Vleet, on your final Commission meeting. We'll give you a round of applause.
Thank you.
virtual applause. The meeting, the December 2nd meeting of the Bothell Planning Commission is adjourned at 8:39 December 12th. So thank you all. Have a good night and see most of you in two weeks.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you.